To order, this is the Oregon City Commission and this is our regularly scheduled meeting for Wednesday, December 17th, the last meeting of 2008. Good evening, I'm Alice Norris, the mayor.
Damon Mayby, Commissioner President.
Doug Neely.
Commissioner.
Daphne West, City Commissioner.
Trent Tidwell, City Commissioner.
Please stand and join me in this salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's actually a very special meeting, it's the last meeting for Commissioner Tidwell and our Commission President, Mayby, so...
He's sitting behind the podium, but not our last meeting.
It is your last meeting as an elected official, so it makes it very special. And toward that end, I would like to call the General Manager of South Fork Water Board, where Oregon City gets its water, to please come forward. John Collins, welcome, John.
Welcome, thank you Mayor Norris. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes' time tonight. Damon Mayby is a former member of the South Fork Water Board at the end of this month and...
Actually, he's current.
Current, excuse me.
He was at the end of the month.
And Damon's had four great years with us and meant a lot to us and done a lot of great things for us and on behalf of the staff and the board members, we'd like to present you with a plaque, so if I may do so.
Yes, thank you very much. Damon is one of the three officials that serves on the South Fork Water Board, that is Commissioner West, myself, and Commissioner Mayby, and then Westland has three people as well, and Damon has been a great contributor to South Fork and I really appreciated your service.
And thank you very much. Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope, I'm fine, thank you very much.
Well, go make that good South Fork water. Everything going okay with the storm?
It is, we're doing fine.
All right, thank you very much. Next, we have Citizen Comment, Commissioner Mayby, do you have anyone who wishes to speak to us?
I have received a grand total of zero Citizen Comment cards.
But then, your duty has been discharged. Next, looking at the agenda, is there, are there any items that...
If you have a heart attack or something, he's got to take over.
Absolutely, I don't plan on having a heart attack, though.
None of us do.
I scheduled mine for next week.
Yeah, I don't want to do that, that's why I play so much tennis. Okay, I would like to ask if there are any items that any individual wishes pulled for separate consideration off of the consent agenda.
I don't, but there's some things after the fact that I'd like to ask a question about, but it doesn't impact it.
You certainly may. All right, then we'll take the agenda in the order in which it is listed. First is general business, and that is the discussion of our new building, the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and plumbing permit fees. This is Dan Dratlar, Community Development Director, Dan.
Yes, Guy Spurbs here, he's our building official and he is going to summarize the changes that we're proposing to bring our building fees up to what we see as the industry average.
Welcome, Guy.
Welcome, for the record, Guy Spurbs, building official. This was presented at last week's work session, I believe you saw it at that...
Yes, we did.
...time for the first time, so I am available today to certainly answer any questions that you may have. As I indicated, this has gone through the public notification process through the State Building Codes Division, was posted on their website as a fee increase. I did take the liberty to go on the website just to check our notification out and was interesting to see that City of Woodburn, Newburgh, Albany, Corvallis, Marion County, Beaverton, City of Klatzkini, Oregon City, City of Jacksonville, and City of Camby have recently or are in the process at this point of going through a free modification process as well. And in addition, Monmouth, Warrenton, Crook County, Columbia County, and Gresham have just very recently, within the last couple of months, completed a fee change proposal for increases as well, so.
The plan this evening is that we will have discussion to allow dissemination through the public and then take action at our next meeting. Is that still the plan?
As we move into January, yes.
Yes, okay. Other questions from the Commissioners, Commissioner West.
Question, comment. Well, when I heard you read the whole list of cities that have, or that are looking at raising the fees, I can understand why the article was in the paper from the Home Builders' Association Concerns over, you know, all the building fees around town getting raised and slowing new housing starts and certainly, or last year I was totally supportive of raising our fees in the storm drain and water and we raised in the pavement, pavement maintenance, but you know, I have to, this is really a little bit more to consider when you, the economy has changed so much, even since last year, and we were, you know, being sensitive last year about those issues, but now, and when you look at building as economic development and paying, you know, the, you know, their property taxes and our, for our revenues, so well, that'll be an interesting discussion.
Just as way of background too, and again, I just want to kind of reiterate what we talked about at the work session, kind of address that a little bit. As you recall, we have not raised fees sometime, I think it's 2001 was the last time that we've looked at fees, but, and the reason we didn't do that is because we had a fairly healthy contingency in the, our building reserve. And again, this is an enterprise fund, it is funded 100% building side of this from fees and charges. Now, it's part of also the Community Development Department, which has had a small subsidy from the general fund, even though last year we did very well, and that's also mostly fee based up for general planning types of effort. Having not raised fees for quite some time, if you look at the scale of where we fit market wise, we're actually towards the bottom in many of these fee categories. And it does raise some interesting policy issues because the concerns that Commissioner West raised are very valid concerns these days. But someone is going to pay those fees, and if it's not those seeking those services, then, and we fall further behind, especially without that contingency, then that has to be made up from the general fund, and so then the taxpayer is the individual that is paying those costs. So, you know, you've got some interesting policy issues we're going to have to wrestle with, we have to kind of determine where we're at market, definitely one of the things we have been trying to work through is to ensure that new growth pays its way, and this is one of those issues that we'll be wrestling with.
Yes, I think I might have had some of the same comments until I saw the averages and Oregon City's existing fees, commercial and residential versus the proposed, and saw that how far below we are in almost every circumstance, the average, or just a little bit below. And the, we are one of the communities that's on the edge of the urban growth boundary, so we have the ability, so we have growth potential, and I really do want growth to have an opportunity to pay for itself.
Let me add one thing too, that makes this kind of unique with Oregon City. Even though we were a growing community with the budget issues we had, we did not add staffing to the building department. If we had, and you get a downturn like this, and normally you would say, okay, you know, we'll look at kind of adjusting those costs, you'd probably be seeing staff layoffs. You have to maintain some base level of that just to provide the services we do day-in, day-out basis, and we've always been at base level, so there's really no place to go there unless we're really going to slash services, and I don't think folks would really want to see that either.
And I, Commissioner, I certainly want you to understand that I fully understand your concerns. The cost of development, and I want to clarify one thing that perhaps needs some clarification, is that development costs for overall construction are, building permit fees and structural or construction permit fees are only a portion of about 10 to 12% of those overall costs, including the systems development fees and taxes and, like the metro and the school taxes and so forth, so there's a fine line between Saturday night and Sunday morning sometimes. You don't want to drive people away from getting permits. I mean, you need to make permits affordable because you don't want to drive people away, okay? So, and you don't want to make it a financial hardship that people have to avoid getting them because they cost too much. But in my experience, that people, the biggest concern that I hear from the construction industry today is that they are far more concerned about having a level of service that they can depend on because time is money to the construction industry because of the loans that they're taking out. If they lose inspections for a day, or if they lose two weeks on a plan review or getting it through the process, that can cost them, in essence, way more than what their permit fees are costing, so.
Commissioner Neely.
Well, actually, the City Manager, I think, addressed my concern, I'll go ahead and present it anyway, and that is, we have less development, I assume that's going to be less revenue to, to the city in the process, and my concern was that we don't increase those fees just because we're getting less development, I mean, that ought not to be the reason. The fact, he says that we have not increased our staff and that should, should the fact of development go down to the point where decisions have to be made, that might, one remedy would be then, we would have to look at the, at the staffing itself. But I think you address that concern at this point in the game anyway.
Commissioner Tidwell.
Well, I'd just like, I'd like to echo what Commissioner West had to say, I tell you, if I was here when you guys were doing this building, I must say, I'm kind of glad I'm not going to be, because I, during these tough times, I would have, I guess I have issue with just, I mean, the points that you have made are valid and they're obviously, I mean, probably what needs to be done, but when you say, "We haven't raised fees in this period of time," it's difficult for me just to say, "Okay, let's just raise fees because we haven't done it for a while." That's not really a good reason for me to say, "We need a fee increase." When you lay them out like you did, Guy, I mean, it's obvious from a logic point of view, we need to, but it just, it sits in my heart that we're kind of punishing home builders, and they got families and they're trying to make a living too, so I don't know, I just, I think what you said was on the spot on, Daphne, but, I mean, I don't know, that's just my feelings on it, Guy.
I heard so much during the recent annexation vote that, you know, growth needs to pay for itself, and the one that's, I think, shocking to me is on page nine, the building permit fee comparison for 2008, for the square foot evaluation from $1 to $500, is that what that is? Our existing is $15. The only lower one is Happy Valley in Clackamas County at 12. Everybody else is, the average is $42.69. Ours is at 15. That's quite a discrepancy among the cities, so...
I can't do the paperwork for that.
Yeah, yeah, so I think it's really important that, that we do have our work covered, so, and it also, I don't think in any circumstances have you raised, have you proposed raising it above the average?
That's correct, that was very intentional.
So, and I appreciate that, since we've always sort of had a never lagging or lead the market, and so they appear to be, Commissioner, Mayby.
Yeah. I understand the concerns expressed by both Commissioner West and Tidwell, and I do, to a certain extent, share them, but the fact of the matter is, is that if, if we're giving away our inspections because we're not charging what it costs, then we're harming everybody for it, and if that means that a house doesn't get built because their margin is so small, then maybe it's good that it isn't built. The other side of it, though, is, what the mayor pointed out, is that you've essentially moved us up to the, to the average, a penny here and there, but effectively, we're up at the average. That's the average as of the 2008, but you just read at least six of these cities that are raising their rates, so we're actually going to be below the average if they all pass their rates. Not much, probably, but the fact of the matter is, is, you know, we're catching up quite a bit, and, and still, in, I think in many instances, won't be really even up to the average again, but if these are costs that will enable you to, you know, that are true reflective costs of doing business, because, you know, I spent the day with, with one of your inspectors and we were, I'm, he didn't even have lunch, except that I said, "Stop, I'm taking you to lunch." So, you know, it's one of those things that, that your guys are moving and, you know, it's enterprise, so they've got to earn their, their fee, and if they're inspecting houses sometimes two or three times, then, you know, it's, that fee's got to be reflected accordingly. If a builder builds like they, like their plan says, then their fees are less. It's when they start modifying on the fly, is what I saw a couple of instances of it, and I understand, once you start doing stuff, you know, oh, it makes more sense to make the door this way and that, but just like the government, you got to pay for change orders, so.
And this is what we think it will take for us to get by.
Commissioner Neely.
I was just going to make a quick comment. Over the last four or so years, we have been, in fact, I think maybe more than four years, subsidizing community development out of the general fund, and so I think a person could put forward the argument that growth has not been paying itself, for itself in terms of that particular department.
If I may, I'd like to just bring other, one issue and maybe address what the City Manager said, in as far as workload and staffing levels. It is my opinion, when a developer or a contractor comes in and takes out a permit and signs that permit, that it is basically a contract with the city, and I am, I am agreeing to that contract, that he will pay the money, but, but also that I will provide the services that he's providing, that he's paying for. So that process may, there's, it's not an immediate process, it may be that I'm providing that service for a number of years after that, that revenue has been brought in, and that's kind of where we are now, we're carrying through, and we still have literally hundreds and hundreds of permits that I, or contracts, I guess, that I still have the duty to honor, so.
So, this will be up for adoption in January, and the public can access these charts and look at the range of the existing fees and the proposals and the comparison with other cities on our website, so, and I'm sure that they can feel free to call you if they have questions.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Next item on the agenda is the consideration of a memorandum of understanding, an MOU, with our Main Street Board. We've looked at this also at the work session, actually here at the City Commission also, and gave some changes, and now we're back to look at it again with possible adoption this evening. Larry Patterson, the City Manager.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Commission, you again have this memorandum sitting for you, and I'll remind you, this is a non-binding document, and I would have given you the, the redline version, but it's gotten to be unreadable. So, and I've tried to capture what we talked about last time, I think we've done most of it, I know that Commissioner West has at least one area, so if you have questions or if there's things that we still need to work on, we'll do our best to capture those thoughts in this non-binding document.
Yes, thank you. We spend a lot of time talking about it. Commissioner West.
Our non-binding document of expectations, well, I did go through, well, after our work session, we were, tried to summarize my concerns, and they still didn't get quite written right in here, which paper is this? Okay, so under Section 5 on the Urban Renewal Commission Expectations, you have A, B, and C, which are fine, and here I would like to add a D, and this is what I, my concerns were the other night, and I hope I got this, that, or are in agreement with while we were all thinking. So D could read, "The Main Street Programs Design Committee will help create new design standards and guidelines that will serve as criteria in prioritizing urban renewal grant awards for building renovations in the downtown, town north end, Urban Renewal District." It's a long sentence.
Do you have that for me?
Yep, but the problem with that is that that talks about the Main Street, so it
shouldn't really go under Urban Renewal Expectations. You have the Main Street Board will, the design will.
Well, how else do you want to say?
It needs to start out by saying Urban Renewal Commission will.
Or it needs to be put...
Or it needs to be put in a different place, right, I agree.
Well, I don't know, do you think so? I don't, I don't...
Yes, because this is Urban Renewal Commission Expectations.
So, and the expectation is of the urban renewal, of the Main Street Programs to help create new design standards and guidelines that will serve as criteria. I just started the sentence differently. Some of these other aren't all, you know, look at some of the other sections. It, it isn't the city's expectations, it's for our urban renewal grants that where we are looking for this...
You could put that under Section 3, though, and as it...
It could, it could go under Section 3.
I honestly don't see why it wouldn't work like this, but I mean, I'm just, I'm not...
Because it sounds to me like it's, it's giving an expectation to the Design Committee rather than to the Urban Renewal Commission, I just think it just needs to be...
You could say the Urban Renewal Commission will ask the Main Street Committee to...
Provide a recommendation.
Okay, why don't you say that, then?
Yeah, but I'd like to be able to see that, though, or read it, or read it one more time if we're going to adopt this...
The Urban Renewal Commission will what?
Will request the Main Street...
Design.
Design Committee.
Recommendations from?
Yeah, whatever the hell the rest of it is.
Okay, the Urban Renewal Commission will seek recommendations to help...
From.
From, okay. I just was trying to finish this up tonight, so we...
I think you can finish it with that.
Yeah, so that we can move on from this.
Finish the sentence, then.
The Urban Renewal Commission will seek recommendations from the Main Street Programs Design Committee in creating new design standards and guidelines that will serve as criteria in prioritizing urban renewal grants for building renovations.
Yes.
Okay.
If I can get that from you all.
Sounds fine. Okay, is there a motion for approval or further discussion? Commissioner Neely.
Go ahead.
I read back through this, and I, there's, there really isn't in the Main Street Board's Expectations, Section 3, there really isn't much in the way of a, public meetings, other than the annual meeting, I believe, and I'm going to actually recommend D be modified. The Main Street Board will conduct periodic public meetings, including an annual meeting open to all businesses and so forth, because I think the expectation would be it's, going to have more public input put in an annual, than in a single annual meeting, and I think it should be reflected in, in the, in the expectations. So the Main Street Board will conduct periodic public meetings, including an annual.
Periodic could be semi-annual, quarterly could be monthly.
Yeah, I, we, that's right, we don't have to be specific as to what it is.
Project specific.
Is there anyone who objects to that addition?
No.
Okay, then with those two...
Let me get that wording...
Yes, with those two additions, may I have a motion for adoption? Commissioner, Mayby.
I have another...
Another one, okay.
And this one's really picky, you, that's my word of the day from my calendar.
Picky, you.
Picky, you.
I know that word.
Picky, you.
Section 3, on page 2, the second set of ABCs, actually the third set of ABCs. It goes A, B, C, D, E, F, blank, blank, H, I.
We'll clean those up, too.
There's a G in there somewhere, and I'm not sure where it goes.
Yeah, that's right, I got that, too.
Okay, get that cleaned up before we send it on.
It goes after historic preservation.
Yeah.
Goes before historic preservation, that G, I don't know why that dropped.
Right. Okay, with those, may I have a motion then for adoption of this MOU?
I move that we adopt the MOU with the Main Street Board.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended, tonight.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Mayby, so further comment or discussion? Seeing none, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Tidwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Next, we have the minutes of December 3rd, we have a motion for adoption, please.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Tidwell. On the minutes, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Tidwell?
Aye.
No, you abstain.
Abstain.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes 4-0 with one abstention. Next, we have the consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Mayby, seconded by Commissioner West. On the consent agenda, the vote, please.
Commissioner Tidwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Gentlemen, you...
I had some comment after, remember.
Oh, you're up the consent agenda, yes, Commissioner Neely.
Do we have a standard process when we fill the committee vacancies? That is, I know some, some of the advisory boards, I presume each time a vacancy is available, there's a public notification of that vacancy.
Urban renewal is appointed by us, so we have...
But I'm talking about the advisory, I'm talking about the advisory committees to the City Commission.
Yes, the other ones, I do.
No, I understand you make the appointment, that's not the question I asked.
Sorry, sorry.
When they're, when, when, when they're, when they're open, I presume that we have public notifications as an application.
We just finished that.
And some of the advisory committees, I know, interview the prospective, prospective, is that true of all of them?
No.
Should that be in their bylaws?
I don't think it's appropriate for the Planning Commission to interview their own members.
Okay.
For instance, and I think there are a couple of others that I wouldn't see as appropriate as well.
That probably is a good work session question.
Yeah, I think, I think it is true because...
Yeah, and just to talk about the logic of it.
Yes, because Nancy, I, our City Recorder and I have talked about that, because, I mean, when I came into office, I standardized some things to a certain way, but there are still some differentiations in the procedures and processes that we use, so we could talk about how that's done.
Okay.
So, we'll add that to a work session agenda for the new year. Next, we have Communications.
Madam Mayor, first of all, I've got a few things, but I'm going to ask Ms. Crushhour to give you some information that was requested from Commissioner Mayby.
Oh, about our streets.
...an email about how the winter weather is going, what are the costs, and then I also wanted to give you a short briefing on a slightly different strategy we're using this year, rather than using as less sand than we used previously. Okay, sorry. So we'll be giving you a briefing on a somewhat more analytical strategy we're using, and we're using magnesium chloride as a deicer first, and then we're using sand second. We spent a tremendous amount of time cleaning up sand previously from winter storms, so it worked great, but we have gained access to deicer magnesium chloride through ODOT, and our street supervisor, Jim Birch, has just done an amazing job in transforming one of our trucks into a very, very effective application device for this deicer, and he's worked very well with ODOT in getting the materials, setting up tanks at our operations site, so that we can use it very easily. Now, right now, we have a shortage of deicer throughout the region, so...
Since we had the tanker go over on 205.
Yeah.
The irony is the icier tanker slipped off the road in the ice.
Actually, I think it was a bolt between the tanks and the main truck, but regardless of that, we are using, and you'll find that, I think the public is going to notice, well, there's no sand, and therefore I'm concerned.
Yes, I got a call about it.
What's public works doing? And I, I thought it would be helpful to explain that in many, many cases, we're being much more selective in even what streets we treat. So we're, I have, we have our map, and I, all I did was copy the legend for you, and it's at your places, but you'll see that we have, and there's the large map here. I got a portion of a map, that's the legend.
It's the legend.
I didn't think you needed the whole map. This map has priority 1, 2, and 3 routes for us to address when we have a winter storm, and the first priorities is to provide, make sure we have cleared roadways for emergency services, the fire stations in the hospital, and, and major arterials, and then, as you can see, we start working on minor arterials, and a very logical kind of approach to the clearing of the streets. And so that's the first thing, and what we started to do in this particular storm is, once we knew it was getting very cold out, we applied deicer to the pavement, and actually a lot of the snow started coming, so we then applied deicer to, to the snow along these priority routes. The other place we hit is intersections and roads that have hills, because obviously those are the most difficult for our citizens to navigate, and flat roads, we're tending not to do, pay, spend a lot of effort and materials on roads that are flat, we're trusting that folks, if they're out driving in their cars, they should, we're hoping they can negotiate flat roads. Call order, no. And then, of course, as you get into day 2, day 3, we, what we did on the first day of this storm, because we knew it was going to be lengthy, is we started a 24-hour, 8-hour, 3-hour, 3-8-hour shifts with our utility maintenance specialist crews. So we have, we have crews during the day, and then we have 4 during, between 3 and midnight, and then we have another 4 working between midnight and 8:00 in the morning, so we have full coverage, so they can respond and get ready for the morning commute, they can kind of do things that people didn't get to do in the day, they can work on the equipment to make sure it's ready for the next day, that kind of thing, and it's been very effective. Of course, that comes with a cost, but we're confident that actually the way we're running the crews, we're... running the crews, we're, um, probably not, um, we're probably having lower costs than many communities that don't have this kind of contract set up with a union and have it going for 24 hours a day. So to answer your question most directly, Commissioner Maybe, so far, we believe, and we think this will take us through, um, November 20th, which is probably, well, we're hoping that's when this, December 20th.
Maybe December.
Thank you. When I think the storm will be, um, starting to stop. Anyway, in that time, we have about 700 hours, people hours, on the streets tending to the storm. 365 hours of that is regular time, and then we have about 185 hours of overtime. And then you also have a number of management staff that have probably put in 60-plus hours themselves, and that is just contract, um, management time. The, um, we've spent about $2,000 in materials, which is not too bad. So far, they, both the deicer and sand are pretty economical materials to acquire, and we've applied about almost 2,000 gallons of the magnesium chloride deicer, and so far, we've only applied about 30 to 40 cubic yards of sand. So we're hoping to keep the sand, as we run out of deicer, we might need to apply, well, we won't hesitate to apply more sand, but we're really trying to approach this in a much more, very strategic way. And our supervisor's just kind of, he's so excited about, you know, he, he'll, he looks at the street and he goes, "Well, you know, the people that turned onto Main Street, they're, they're taking some of that deicer that they got up 10th Street when they were sitting that, and then they're tracking it down to Main Street." So it's, he's really thinking it out very thoroughly, and, but you will see a little bit of difference in how, um, how we're attacking this kind of a storm in terms of our application of predominantly how much sand we put down.
May I follow up on that also, because I, I received a phone call from a taxpayer that said, "You know, I pay so much in taxes, and it doesn't appear that you're doing the same job you did in the past." So how would you talk to a member of the public about what benefit this is for them?
I think in terms of safety and ability to get around on our streets, it was equal to what we've done in the past. The thing that's slightly different, too, is we didn't get nearly as much snow. If we start getting four inches or more of snow, then you'll start seeing a lot more plowing as well. But I would say in terms of ability to get around, we have the same results, and probably less impact on the environment and less cleanup costs in the end. Now granted, this is the kind of program, we're going to continue to monitor it and, go back and say, what went well, what didn't went well. And we do understand, we, we want to get the message out to the public, so, um, we never were able to get every local street, though. And what the other thing is we've done is concentrating on the local streets that have hills, like Null Crest subdivision, it's Barkley Hills, it's very difficult getting down in there, so we've, when we, when we've taken care of our first priority and second priority streets, then we start trying to get into those local roads that have the most difficulty getting around.
Well, I, I have to tell you that my neighbors are really pretty impressed that the mayor doesn't get her street swept.
No, you're a local street, that's correct.
Mine got sand.
You got yours, and I guess you're more important. Commissioner Neely?
Yeah, you, you mentioned lower impact on the environment. Back a few years ago, when, I don't think there were very many places in Oregon that used deicers at all, people back east would scratch their heads, and we put the argument, well, probably using salt isn't that good of a, um, environmental impact, because these are all going to drain into the river systems anyway. What is the effect of magnesium? I mean, it's not going to be only us, it's going to be, I presume the other cities are using it, too. It's all in the stormwater system that's going down into the rivers.
That's correct. And what I understand is it's not, um, doesn't have a negative impact on the river, and I would.
It has a positive charge, so it's not, but anyway.
Yeah, right, right. It is corrosive, so that, um, cars, if we use it over an extended period of time, you'd probably see some, um, you'd notice some impact on vehicles, but my, I have been told, and I would be happy to get you more detailed information about that, to, I'm not really prepared to reply to that this evening, but I, we're using it because we have been told that it is a safe material to use in these situations.
Yeah. I got just one other question there, too. Since our legend included part of the map, and I think I know the reason, but you've got, you've got the Tem Water area located as a priority one, it, it intersects with, of course, McLaughlin Boulevard, where you look at the actual intersection of others, the other main streets that go into McLaughlin, like 15th, 14th, 10th, and, and Main, that those segments are not indicated with any kind of priority, and I presume that in terms of them, those cars getting out into, onto McLaughlin, uh, they would be fairly critical to make sure the traffic would move in McLaughlin, only had the signals, uh, supporting it.
Right, and I'm, I, that kind of detail is, um, I think for one reason, those are flat streets, but I do know at 8th Street, we're applying material because there's a slope that goes down to McLaughlin, and again, some of those, I could, I probably need to talk to Jim and John as to, you know, why isn't there a line on that street, but we're well aware of the route to the hospital. And then you do need to be selective about which street you take, but we're, we're really hitting the arterials here.
Commissioner Maybe?
Yeah, two things. One, um, I, I think I'd respond to a citizen who says we're not doing a good enough job, that I would gladly throw a couple handfuls of rocks at their car if they feel they need to have that sand pinging off their car while they're driving. The other thing, though, is, um, just a concern I had in driving around, um, Division Street, um, today, thought out real well, but Monday and Tuesday was very washboard-y with, you know, the impact of ice building up harder than, and, um, since that is effectively the only route to the hospital, um, I was wondering if, if there's a methodology to, you know, I don't know, drive chain trucks over it to break up those washboards, or they could be additional, um, deicer applied to maybe to melt it faster, because, um, you know, Monday, it was still kind of a, a dangerous road to drive. By Tuesday, it was inconvenient, but, um, and then tonight, it was fine, but.
Yeah, I, I was on Division Street on Monday, and, um, I think, again, we're trying to, on, on the flatter areas, because it's washboard, doesn't mean it's unsafe.
Right, I'm just thinking of the poor guy who's.
It's not slippery, we're looking for ice, and.
I'm thinking of the guy in the ambulance who's trying, you know, I had no problem driving it, but, you know, hey, got to get the IV in, got to hit him with the paddles, and, you know, I mean, whatever that may be, it's, uh, you know, that, that's why, what my concern is.
I can take that back. I, I think it's a matter of how much, how many resources do we have to pay attention to those kind of details, though?
Right.
Because we also need to make sure the rest of the routes, but that's, I can take that back as a comment to the staff.
And it might have just been the way the weather hit this time. I mean, I understand that the different composition of the snow next storm might be completely different. Tomorrow, when it's, you know, 20 degrees and there's three inches of clear ice on the road, it's going to be a completely different thing, I don't know, it'll be three inches, but.
Let's hope not.
But, I mean, it'll be a different thing, but I just, I think that, that, that Division, or the route to the hospital, whether that's all the way up 7th and all the way down Mall, or whatever it might be, really does need to be, you know, one or two extra look-ats, rather than, you know, so what if you get stuck on Mall, but that ambulance stuck trying to get to the hospital is a lot different than Joe Citizen or Jane Citizen.
I'll take that comment back to, um, staff, and then we'll have to also work on the actual pavement itself on the way to the hospital, right?
Maybe that's the.
Commissioner Tidwell?
You know, Nancy, one of the things that concerns me with this is that, you know, Oregon City has a number of group homes, retirement, assisted living facilities. Are we putting any of those known group homes that are in residential areas on any form of priority level, even though they're flat? Because the ratio or the percentage of people in group homes that need medical, medical attention is always higher than the average homeowner, usually.
No, we have not considered that. We, I, I can look at that and give it some more thought, though. I'd be happy to consider that and see where, see, we don't even have the map, I could, I suppose we can get the map, but we'll look into that for you.
Commissioner Maybe?
Yeah, I, along those lines, I'd say that in, uh, I'm trying to remember what the, which big storm it was, 2001 or 2002, when, you know, Portland was shut down for like three solid days. At one point, they actually did have public workspeople in their trucks delivering medications to homes. You know, hopefully, we won't have that issue, because we are generally flat, but, um, you know, it might be worth talking to public, you know, Bureau Maintenance and seeing what, if they've developed a response panel for something like that, I mean, you know.
Right, and we'd want to work with our police department on that as well, to figure out, and, and the fire department, um, in terms of what kind of response.
Yeah.
Our emergency services would provide in that situation, but Public Works is always ready to back up emergency services as needed.
Yeah, but, but it's a good coordination, you know, that, heaven forbid, somebody's stuck when, when they're only two blocks away from a clear road, you know, kind of a thing.
Right, oh, yeah. Agree.
Okay. Did you finish your report?
Yes.
Thank you very much, that was a very, I think, important to know, because I've been hearing about other cities on the, on television, so it's good to know what we're doing, too. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, you have at your place this evening a resolution accepting a settlement from QOS related to the telecommunications fee, uh, saying it's been going on for quite some time, uh, there has been a settlement agreement reached, uh, that's what you have outlined there, and, uh, for us to sign on that, they wanted some acknowledgement from the City Commission that you have approved this, so I need your, uh.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Maybe, seconded by Commissioner Tidwell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We have approved it unanimously.
Okay, also, just want to, uh, let everyone know that, uh, we have had a request for a list of projects for stimulus package from Metro, from the League of Oregon Cities, and as of late yesterday, the, uh, US Conference of Mayor, so we've sent lists to all of those folks, kind of outlining projects that we would have ready to go, depending on what list you're looking at, anywhere from 120 days to, uh, 180 days, I think it is. So, uh, we've got those lists out there, and so we're looking for.
So our chance to put a heated roadway under Division would be.
I, I forwarded those to a couple of other organizations that asked, because everyone's asking for priorities, partly for lobbying.
Is this primarily roads?
No, it's, we, we've actually put everything. We've, uh, we've got the library in there, we've got the swimming pool in there, we do have a number of road projects, there's some sewer projects, the, those things that we feel we could get up and ready to go, which will be a scramble if they give us money on some of those projects. We will get there.
Yeah.
A good scramble.
The Public Operations Building?
Uh, no, we don't have that in there.
It's not quite close enough, probably, too. When we went, Commissioner West and I went to the Oregon Business Conference, as I have gone all, all of the years, but this year particularly was focused on economic stimulus, and, um, I think that's where Senate President Peter Courtney said, "We don't want the 18-month projects, we want to have the 120-day projects," which caused our staff to really scramble to put those together.
Each list gets shorter.
It, it's really strange, isn't it? But thank you for doing that, because I think there's no more important thing for us to do right now, even though I know you've had to redo the list a number of times.
Also, I know you have some presentations, uh, later on this evening, but from staff and I wanted to, uh, pass along our best wishes to Commissioner Maybe and Commissioner Tidwell. I, I personally have always enjoyed working with you, I've enjoyed the decision-making, I've enjoyed, uh, our meetings, uh, and we wish you the best as you move on to other outlets in life, and I know that we'll see you, so don't remain strangers, because there's a lot of work here to do, and we can always use volunteers. And finally, staff and I would like to wish all of you and citizens a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to other reports, um, I would like to appoint, I will appoint, Brian Johnson to the Library Board for the term, uh, 2009 through 2012. That's a reappointment, and also to reappoint Mary Smith and Betty Mum to the Transportation Advisory Committee for 2009 through 2011. And then I think we are actually at the end of our meeting, where, um, you two have taken your last vote in your current, uh, term of office, and we have a little acknowledgement of the, of the hard work, the dedication, the time, the, um, results that the two of you have really put together as we've had this, this team together the last, well, two years for some of us, four years for, for you. I admire anyone who puts their name on the line to run for office, but I think there's no one that knows exactly how much time and effort and reading and, uh, and agonizing, I think, over the decisions that we make here together than someone who's, who's sitting. And you have both put in the time, you put in the effort, and when you see that our city has moved from near bankruptcy to actually a posit, a, a, an increase in our bond rating, it's just incredible. Here, here it's a black hole in the world, and, and we're kind of a little bright light. So you have created the building blocks on which, um, those of us who are going forward will begin to continue to build, build the community, but I hope you're very proud of what you've done. The fire annexation vote, it was a huge, huge community effort, and we couldn't have done it without the positive support from, from you. You've taken courageous votes, you have taken difficult votes. We haven't always agreed, but we've disagreed amicably, and I think you can't ask for anything more than that. So, again, we wish you the best, and we have a couple little things for you.
Since we're not getting a Christmas bonus, we get a plaque.
You know, I understand these can be melted down, so, um. First to our commission president. This is in grateful recognition of your service and dedication to the citizens of Oregon City. Damon Maybe, City Commissioner, 2005, 2009.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Tidwell said the same, but since I can't show favoritism, I have to read it, too. In grateful recognition of your service and dedication to the citizens of Oregon City, Trent Tidwell, City Commissioner, 2005 through 2008. But wait, there's more. Yes, yes, and Commissioner Tidwell did serve as commission president as well.
Twice elected.
For two.
Oh, yeah, twice elected, yes, thank you, Dave.
Two, uh, almost two years. And then, there's more. Nancy has created for you a memory of Oregon City. Robert Jackson, the artist, created this one during Oregon City's 150th birthday, and we have framed these for you, so that, um, so that you can have these on your wall to remember a little bit about.
Do we share?
How far we've come. Yeah, you'll get it for one month, and then you'll give it to Commissioner Maybe.
I get it for two years, you get it for one, or almost two years, you get it for one.
I believe we have one for each of you.
We have one.
Thank you.
There is yours.
Wonderful, I actually have art now. I have to put stuff on my walls. They're not white anymore.
Could someone take a picture? Yes? Let me, please. Thank you. And, one for the two of you. Why don't you stand up and let's take.
Like this?
Which is, yes, why don't you both stand?
Or do we want to just put those down?
No, no, I want, I think you, with the picture also. You guys stand, too, so come on in, just, I just want to get a shot. Thank you. Thank you, Nancy.
Well, thank you both of you, too.
Okay, I'm sure that there may be those who wish to speak, since this is your last meeting, so, um, is there anyone that has words to say? Commissioner Neely, did you?
Yes, I, uh, I've had the opportunity of, uh, serving with both, um, I believe it was, uh, four years ago that I, uh, that Commissioner Tidwell actually came and, uh, took the seat that I had for position, too. I think he's done a wonderful job in that period of time in filling that position. I think he's done a wonderful job in that period of time and filling that position. And Commissioner Mayby also came in at that particular time, and he's, he's done a great job as well, and I appreciate the effort that goes into it. A person can spend a great deal of time in terms of just looking at the materials that we, we get to evaluate. This packet is a very thin one, but sometimes we have packets that require hours of judicious study to, to really go through and understand the issues that are before us. So independent of the special assignments that are, are given by the mayor to each of the commissioners, just the general work that we're expected to do requires a tremendous amount of time to do it well, and I think you have done so, and I appreciate the time you've done it.
Commissioner West.
I certainly spent my time stewing about this, and what I was going to say tonight, and I, I decided that I stewed so much about it, because I wanted to make sure you had the tribute you deserve. So, me, I'm not usually, it's sappy, am I? We've worked on it, but, okay. So I thought, well, you know, I could say you guys have been nice, and it's been fun, and I thought, well, what does that really mean? That's pretty lame, right? So I thought back, and I have to thank you for the respect you've shown me and the rest of us, and as a new commissioner, and as a woman, and colleagues, so I really appreciate it. Sorry, I'm so silly.
That's not my secret, I appreciate that. You're silly.
So where do you go after that? So you have all the respect, then what do we, grows into a trusting relationship? And isn't it nice to come to commission and just work on issues instead of preparing yourself for digs, slams, rolled eyes, you know, all kinds of things like that? So it was really nice, we've had fun, we've been able to just work on issues and have not had to worry about any other personal interests or attacks. And through that, we've really become, I thought, a really a great team, and I love Trent's words through the last few years of, we've sort of had halcyon days here in Oregon City, working towards our rivers and Cove Project and bringing the city forward. And I know, Damon, you're going to be missed on South Fork, you've been a great advocate for the water rights here and, of Oregon City residents, and I'm going to miss your expertise on when it comes time for contracts negotiation with our unions. And Trent, your voice will be missed when it comes time for more citizen issues being moved forward, and with the CIC and any other kind of neighborhood involvement, your voice will be missed. It's not a political statement on my part here on a yes or no vote, but it'll be missed. And I know who else is really going to miss you, that you've been a wonderful advocate for is small business and through the chamber. And, and I hope that you can be involved with Main Street, with some of the small businesses and moving things forward. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
One more thank you, I think, is thank you for your work on the Willema Paul's Locks Committee, and we really appreciate your diligence on, on that, and, and the progress, and the regress, and the progress that, that the committee has been able to make.
It's a very aggressive project.
It definitely is. Are there others who wish to speak? If not-
I said it all.
It's the, it's the, oh, yes, Commissioner Tidwell.
I, I would like to, to thank a few people for this, I mean, very quickly, you know, I don't know, some may know this and some may not, but I've gone to school, I've gone to Warner Pacific for about, for, I think, three years while I've been here on the commission. I think my first year, I didn't-
Was that when you first year?
Yeah, yeah, that's right, yeah, I forgot about that. I look back at some of the things that have gone on during that four years. Wow. You know, Bob Bailey used to sit, I used to, when Bob was here, he used to sit here, and I used to sit there. And Bob used to take extensive notes about meetings. And so after he left, I started to go home and do a little, not nearly the amount that he did, but I was looking at them, and they were kind of frightening, because there were a lot of just activity that went on during that four years. But I can't tell you what an amazing learning process it is to be on this commission. And my whole reason of bringing it up with college is, is that I think I've learned more in the four years that I have been here as a commissioner, about how to lead and about how to work cohesively, how to move things forward, how to back off when you have to, than I ever have in any four-year university. And we have, and I appreciate Mayor Norris, you mentioned some of the accomplishments that this commission has done, but I will tell you one thing, and I'm not just saying this, I think the, the most, the proudest thing I am that I've done or helped with for Oregon City is when I voted to support bringing you on, Daphne. You have been a tremendous colleague, you've been a tremendous friend. Damon, you have as well, at the times when I've needed to call you, you've always been there for me. I, not to be kind of flowery here at all, but I, I also, Mayor Norris, as I, or as I call you on the phone, sweet Alice, I can't-
Ooh.
I can't thank you enough for your patience with me at times and your, your mentorship, your friendship. When others may have looked away, you embraced me and said, "Well," and your words, "Take another look," and you've been a great friend, and I just appreciate all, all of your support and encouragement that you, that you've given. It's been a beautiful ride with Oregon City, it has, and we'll just continue the bus moving forward, and know that I'm there for any assistance when, when needed, and I thank Oregon City for the last four years. And I thank staff. Thank you especially on this end, because when I've thrown out a bad joke, these two have always laughed. So I do want to thank staff here and, and the hard work that you do. We come up here, we make the decisions, but it's really staff who, we're not, we're not staff members, so it's, it's staff who goes back and does all the, the work for it. We, even though they're tough to make the decisions that we make, we don't do the 40-hour a week, 60-hour a week work for that, so thank you, staff, and thank you, everyone, so, thanks.
Commissioner Mayby? Did you have, did you want to have the last words?
You can't forget.
Basically, I'd like to echo everything that Commissioner Tidwell said, and I know everybody's going to miss his Elvis impressions, but I'm sure we can make do with, you know, and, you know, it's, it's just been a pleasure to work with all of you, and with Bob and Tom in the, in the previous two years. I like the fact that we can disagree and still go out and, and have a drink afterwards. And it's, you know, and it's important that there be different perspectives. While some of you out there think, "Well, we're just five peas in a pod," the reality of it is, there's a lot of communication that goes on, and if you look back at our public record, you'll see there's disagreements and, and different votes even on the, on the board. So, you know, but the idea is that it, it was done, you know, professionally and, and with, with knowledge, not just an off-the-cuff kind of remark. You know, I'd like to thank Ed for teaching me Latin. And, and Larry, you know, you've done a wonderful job, you know, you've, you've got a wonderful vision for the city, and, you know, you try to lead us right, and we go left, and you just take that in stride and make us do three lefts so that we're going right, and, you know, it's, you know, it, it's been, you know, really good to, to have your input, and I encourage both the new incoming commissioners to, to make use of, of your knowledge. I mean, you're, you're a straight shooter, and, and it's very important to have that. So, you know, thank you for that. And Dan and Nancy, thank you for putting up with me. I mean, that's really about all I can say. And all of you over there. So I will be around, because, you know, now that Nancy's stuck us on the, on TV and on streaming internet, you can't get rid of me that easy, so, anyway, look forward to many more years of progress with Oregon City. Well done, everybody.
Thank you. It's the end of a, of a very successful four years, and we are adjourned.